Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the May 13th, 2014 Richland School District Two Board Trustees Meeting. We want to thank you for being here. We just came out of Executive Session with the Board discussing a number of items, and thank you for your presence at our Board meeting tonight. At this time, we're going to stand and have the inspirational moment and the Pledge of Allegiance.
This reading is entitled, "Winning the War." Life consists of many battles, some are large and some are small, but these battles are not the war, no matter how big their wall. And the strength we gain from each other, win, lose, or draw, makes us stronger and wiser to ultimately win the war. Life's real struggles are not against human foes, but against forces that seek to destroy, the fabric that binds mankind together, the family unit as we know it. In order to win, we must reject the darkness and prefer the light, condemn that which is wrong and choose that which is right, and seek the peace in lieu of the fight. So as we take on the challenges of life, let's remain focused on what matters most, and we'll win the war over time. That is, our real love for each other and our service to mankind. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. On tonight, we'd like to make a special presentation. We're extremely honored that our very own fellow Board Member, Dr. Monica Elkins-Johnson, has been awarded a doctorate degree, and therefore, we'd like to honor her with some flowers and to also recognize her for a tremendous accomplishment. Congratulations, Dr. Elkins-Johnson.
Thank you.
Also, we want you to know that Dr. Manning is, Dr. Manning, I mean, it's Dr. Bo, honorary degree, Dr. Manning. Mr. James Manning is out of state at this time, and he has agreed to take out of his schedule to, the opportunity tonight, to be with us via technology, and so he's Skyping into the meeting, and, Mr. Manning, we want to thank you for being a part of the Board meeting on tonight.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Johnson.
At this time, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Anderson.
Seconded.
Seconded by Ms. Brill. Any discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote. Mr. Manning, you should be able to vote also, I'm told.
That's correct, yes, sir, I'm voting now.
Motion to approve passes 7-0, thank you very much. Next on our agenda is the Consent Agenda. The Chair will entertain the motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the Consent Agenda as listed.
Moved by Dr. Fleming.
Seconded.
Seconded by Ms. Anderson.
Amendment on one personnel that I think I would ask Mr. Garrett to follow up on and report back.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote. Next on our agenda is our Special Recognitions, Dr. Hamm.
Yes, I'd like to file on Lady Ruth to make those presentations.
Ms. Anderson, help us out there? Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Members of the Board, Dr. Hamm and Staff, as we approach the end of another award-winning year, we have many achievements to recognize. Of course, it wouldn't be a springtime Board meeting without recognizing another year of first-place awards from the Spring Valley Air Force Junior ROTC, and we invite them to come forward now. For the 18th year, the Viking Drill Team has won the 2014 Top Gun All-Services State Drill Championship. Let me just make sure y'all heard that, for the 18th year, I've never had an experience where a school has won an award that many times, it's amazing. They defeated 17 South Caro-
Hold it! Hold it! Out, eight, freeze day, arms. Spring Valley High School, the Viking Drill Team reports his duties, sir. Thank you, sir. Order, arms.
Can you see why? They defeated 17 South Carolina Army, Marine, Navy, and Air Force high schools throughout the state to claim this top honor. The team also claimed the prestigious Governor's Trophy for the Best All-Services Junior ROTC in the state. I am sure most of you know Master Sergeant Perry Langston, and is the instructor, coach, and Major Frank Ward is the detachment commander. The team has also been selected for the Air Force Junior ROTC 2013-2014 Distinguished Unit Award, which recognizes units that have performed above normal expectations while making a positive impact on the cadets, the school, and the community. And for the sixth year, Chief Langston has been handpicked to lead the Air Force Junior Reserve Officer Training Corps Instruction Certification Course this summer, and won more new award this week. Major Frank Ward and Chief Master Sergeant Langston were selected to receive the 2013-2014 Outstanding Instructor Award. Only 10% of instructors earn this recognition. Now, cadets, at this time, we'd like for you to come forward, and we're going to let you introduce yourself, and we're going to give the stack of certificates to your instructors, and they'll hand them out. So if y'all want to, however y'all want to command yourself over here, to the microphone to introduce yourself.
Yes. I'm Cadet Colonel Carly Benzega, I'm the Corps Commander, and I'm also one of the Deputy Drill Team Commander, and this is the award-winning Viking Drill Team, I'll pass it on to my fellow commanders.
My name is Cadet Major Marcus Buck, I am currently the Drill Team Commander as of right now. Pass it on to my fellow commander right here.
I'm Cadet Major Glover, I am interim Drill Team Commander coming up, and I'll pass it down to my fellow supporters.
I'm Cadet Roberts, and, um, um-
I'm Cadet Major Green, retired Drill Team Honorable Commander.
I'm Cadet Master Sergeant Kierlo.
I'm Cadet Staff Sergeant Gibson.
I'm Cadet Second Lieutenant Chikon.
I'm Cadet Staff Sergeant Patton.
I'm Cadet First Lieutenant Bryant.
I'm Cadet Wall.
I'm Cadet Senior Master Sergeant Soland.
I'm Cadet Tech Sergeant Anderson.
I'm Cadet Staff Sergeant Daniel.
I'm Cadet Sergeant, Sergeant Williams.
I'm Cadet Staff Sergeant Kern.
I'm Cadet Tech Sergeant Shapiria Young.
I'm Cadet Major Brownlee.
I'm Cadet Second Lieutenant Pettybone.
I'm Cadet Staff Sergeant Bruhl.
I'm Cadet Captain Bryant, Commander of Deflight, Top Flight.
And I'm Melinda Anderson, passing out the certificates, but I'm only going to pass the load out to their commander, and thank you and congratulations for a job continuously well done, representing District Two.
I just want to thank everyone for the hard work, and for Super Richland School District Two Committee, thanks 100% from Spring Valley Air Force ROTC, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we want to recognize all of the students who scored perfect ACT and/or SAT scores this year. Many of them were unable to attend tonight, probably because they're at home studying for advanced placement exams, or final exams, but we want to recognize them anyway. If you are here, please make your way forward as I call your name. The Principals for these high-achieving students are Spring Valley's Principal, Dr. Baron Davis, and Richland Northeast Principal, Sabrina Suber, and so if your student isn't here, y'all can get them their certificate.
We have two perfect ACT scores of 36, Richard Chin and Gregory Razaloff, both from Spring Valley. Moving on to the perfect SAT math scores of 800, we have James Brewer, Richard Chin, Jonathan Clymer, Matthew Hoag, Karen Lee, Sarah Song Lee, Guillermo Pineda, and Gregory Razaloff, all from Spring Valley, and Chi Lin from Richland Northeast High School. Perfect SAT critical reading scores, Chi Lin, Austin Lippert, and E.A. Matthews from Richland Northeast, Benjamin Fetzer, Sanjay Vandada, Chance Sensala, Hema Benavencata-
Kliss, and I believe she's here.
And they are from Spring Valley. And the last perfect scores are on the SAT writing, that's perfect score of 800, Bushra Islam and Gregory Razaloff from Spring Valley. Getting very tongue-tied tonight, I apologize. Congratulations to all our perfect scores. Ridgeview High School Student Council has received national attention, and I'd like to call up Ridgeview High School Student Body Leaders Carmen Nord and Shiler Horton, along with School Principal Brenda Mack Foxworth. Student Activities Director Lisa Ellis could not be here tonight. The Ridgeview High School Student Council is a recipient of the prestigious 2014 National Gold Council of Excellence from the National Association of Student Councils. The Student Council was also awarded the South Carolina Gold Council of Excellence, won the Best Project for its Homecoming video, and Lacey Ann Robinson, who could not be with us tonight, was inducted into the Terry McCoy Leadership Hall of Fame. Congratulations on these great achievements. Mr. Jackson, did you want to switch now, or keep going?
She needs to, she needs to. Yeah, you go finish. Yeah.
Okay. Brenda Hafner, Principal of Blythewood Middle School, please come forward. For the second time, Blythewood Middle has been designated as a National School to Watch by the National Forum to Accelerate Middle Grades Reform. Blythewood Middle is one of four South Carolina schools re-designated as a South Carolina Schools to Watch after successfully completing a reassessment and review of their programs. In assessing the school, the National Forum describes Blythewood Middle as "a school organized for success, where respect is modeled by students and staff, and the environment is warm, friendly, and caring." And Principal Hafner, would you introduce who's with you?
This is my curriculum specialist, she said, "Dr. Richard Schreiber, Sprenk Harner," and I say, "Dr. Assistant Professor," he said.
Thank you, and congratulations. Our last group of honorees are all athletes who are invited to play in the North-South All-Star Games of their respective sports, as well as the Clash of the Carolinas for soccer. We are just learning daily who is, which seniors are earning this prestigious award, so we're going to recognize who we know of so far, and probably at the next meeting, we'll have more North-South athletes to recognize. First is baseball. We have a name that you probably all have heard of, Chris Moody from Ridgeview High School. Come on up, Chris. This pitcher and outfielder led the Blazers into the state playoffs, and most of all, pitched two no-hitter games this season. His stats are amazing, and have gained him a scholarship at Erskine College. His coach is Joe Harvley, Athletic Director David Gordon, and Principal Brenda Mack Foxworth.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So excited, they can't, they couldn't wait, what's that? That's right.
And he has a scholarship going where?
Erskine.
Erskine, congratulations.
Very good, congratulations, Chris. In girls softball, Principals, as you come up for your North-South, you probably like want to hang close, because we'll have more. In girls softball, we have two players invited to participate in North-South All-Star Soccer Games, Jessica Roth from Blythewood High School, and Tori Taylor from Ridgeview High School. Jessica's coach is Dwayne Jones, and Tori's coaches are Brooke Beatenbaugh and Bruce Dingler, and Principal Keith Price and Brenda Mack Foxworth. Congratulations, and good luck in the game. Haven't played yet, right? Now to soccer. Savannah Purvis from Blythewood High School, Melissa Wyatt from Richland Northeast High School, Amber Tanner from Ridgeview High School, have all been selected to play in the North-South All-Star Soccer Game. Melissa's coach is John Mills, who could not be here tonight. Robert Hunter coaches Amber, and Kathy Knight coaches Savannah. And Principals are here, and Athletic Director, Mr. Gordon, can come forward? Great, thank you, congratulations. Now, we don't want to leave out the guys, Hank Halterwanger and Peterson Oselen from Blythewood High School, and Donovan Waddell from Richland Northeast have been selected to play on the North-South Soccer Team. Are they here with us tonight? Peter Whiting is the Blythewood High School Soccer Coach, and John Ahern coaches R&amp;E. Donovan is playing in the, oh, this is why, this is why, hold on a minute, forgot my script. Donovan is playing in the first round of the playoffs tonight. Coach Ahern responded to our invitation by saying, "If he shows up at the Board meeting, he will be very upset." So we don't blame him, he is where he needs to be. We certainly wish all of them well in the North-South Games. The 26th Annual North-South Soccer Classic will be June 28th at Daniel Island. Richland Two also has some soccer standouts who have been selected for the Clash of the Carolinas All-Star Game on July 12th at Daniel Island. It is the only interstate all-star prep soccer event of its kind nationally. Tonight, we are honoring two of those players, Alex Baker from Blythewood High with Coach Kathy Knight, and Dylan Garcia from Blythewood High coached by Peter Whittick. And they're at playoffs, so again, they are where they are supposed to be. Such a busy time of year in our school district, and an exciting time of year.
Absolutely.
That concludes our awards, so one more big round of applause, because this is really an amazing time of year.
Thank you very much, Ms. York, and congratulations to all of our outstanding student athletes. Thank you very much for that. At this time, next on our agenda is a faculty focus, Dr. Hamm.
Yes, Ms. Mullett, our Chief Academic Officer, will be presenting our faculty focus. Thank you, Dr. Hamm. We're delighted tonight to highlight Bobby Cunningham and the WR Rogers Continuing in Technology Education Center, and just one of the things that, many, many things that they have done, I listed for you in the Board Agenda, but I want you to know, first of all, that Mr. Cunningham has done an outstanding job with our Adult Ed program. He has untapped lots of talent, and so, we just want to have an opportunity to highlight and shine what's happening in your area. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mullett. Mr. Chairman, Board Members, Dr. Hamm, and Executive Staff, on behalf of the staff at the WR Rogers Adult Continuing Technology Education Center, I thank you for the opportunity to share some of what we're doing, and some of the successes of the staff, and while, Ms. Mullett, I thank you for the compliment, all compliments go to our staff, they're the ones in trenches making the difference for us. Our vision at the WR Rogers Center is to establish a collaborative learning community, and the three words that are key in that establishment are collaboration, community, and learning. Our guiding principles are to build a strong community, to improve academics, and to create an environment that is conducive to learning. We expect and hope that if we reach our vision, that we will build a stronger community and a better future, one student at a time. So at this time, I'm just going to share with you, within the framework of program, performance, and partners, what we're doing at the WR Rogers Center. Our program runs during the day, Monday through Thursday, for students from 8:30 in the morning to 12:30 in the afternoon. We also run an evening program from 6:00 to 8:00 each Tuesday and Thursday. We're also in the process of running a summer program, we run it from June 16th through July the 31st, a six-week program. Within our program, we offer these types of services to our community, adult basic education, where students come in as they are. Our basic way of educating our students is to first, give them the test of adult basic education, which we call the TAPE, and we determine their educational functioning level. And once that level is determined, then we design an individual plan of instruction for each student that comes at our program. We also have a benefits bank, for those who need the services of some of the agencies around, we have counselors to first determine what services they're eligible for, and then secondly, to actually take them through the application online for those services. We offer compass testing, and if you haven't seen or heard about Work Keys, then I'm sure you'll be hearing a lot about that real soon, because that's going to be a part of the new high school assessment program. But that's what we offer, some people think of us as being simply GED, but we offer high school diplomas, we offer Work Keys, in fact, last year, we distributed over 250 career readiness credentials, Work Keys credentials, ranging from gold, silver, and also bronze. One of the highlights of our program is the Skills for Life program that we work with in conjunction with the school district. That program serves about 200 folks who are needing English as a second language instruction, and we're very excited. South Carolina does not offer a Spanish GED, so we support them by helping them to transport to Georgia and get a Georgia GED, so that they can have a high school credential. Our students perform at five or six different sites. We try to take our program to where the needs are. We have our base site at the Rogers Center, just spoke about the Windsor United Methodist Church site, we offer BSAT, which is Basic Skills Education Program at Ford Jackson, for those soldiers who are needing support for a career advancement or promotion. We also offer, we have partnerships with LRAIDAC, Parten in Probation, and the Goodwill Job Connection, as well as Virginia College. Virginia College also offers GED testing. Those are our satellite sites where we take what we serve to the community, and we're currently working with attempting to take our services to the Blythewood area as well. Performances of our students are measured by, first, our performances are measured by, first, the number of students that we serve, and then, secondly, the number of fundable students that we serve. We like to refer to the year 2010 to 2011 as before the current vision, and some folks at the staff might say that was before Cunningham, I don't know, you talk, huh? But so when you're looking at this graph, 2010-2011 represents the year before we arrived, and I just wanted to tell you that we have been stepping a ladder heading toward 1,000, and with a little bit of help, I believe, by the time that 2013 and 14 ends, that we will have served more than 1,000 students that have come through our doors, and we're very excited about the progress, and we continue to try to educate students one at a time. The second bar represents the number of students that we get funding for from WIAG, which is, means that they come in, they pre-test, they post, they pre-test and get 12 hours. As you can see, that number is also on the rise, and we expect that that number will be around 800 this year. In our program, we produce two high school credentials, one, the GED, of course, and first year that we got there, the prior year, which is how we were funded, we had 27, and we're, so far this year, we're up to 58, and we're currently up to 31 high school diplomas, this is since July the 1st, and that does not include the 15 diplomas that we have transported students to Georgia. So we are right at about 100 high school credentials, and what that means to this district and this community is that there's 100 folks that doesn't count in the dropout rate. And there are also, if we had done it, as we get better and do it in the right way, there's 100 people that won't count against our graduation rate at the high schools as well. We're real proud of what our staff is doing. To further tell you about how well they're performing, if you can see this graph, those, the column on the left represents the levels at which students enter the Rogers Center, we call them EFLs, or Educational Function Levels. The first level is zero to first grade, the second level is second to fourth, and it goes all the way up to where the last level, A.S.E. High, is 11th and 12th grade. This table, which is our performance measures table by the State Department, tells us the number of students that came into each of those levels, pre-tested, got 40 hours of instruction, and then post-tested. So this table tells us the gain, and the percentage of those students that made a gain. And I'm happy to tell you, and you can look at the numbers that are right, and they speak for themselves, our teachers and our staff has several areas, four of them, to be exact, that students are making gains at 100%, and that speaks volumes of what they're doing there. We have one little hiccup there, and that's the 51.9%, and we're working on it. That's where we get the most of our students, and I can tell you what happened there, our students came in looking for a GED, not to move up a functioning level, and as a result, they took the GED and they left without getting what they needed to move up. Hats off to a great job for our staff, because we work with part-timers for the most part, and they're doing an excellent job. Also like to, thank you. One of the operative words in our vision is community, and we could not do this without the efforts of our partners. Each of these partners listed have signed MOUs with us, where we offer something from the Adult Ed Center, and they also offer something to us to help us reach our goal. And I want to highlight one of those there, and that's the University of South Carolina, not that they're not, they are more important than others, but through that partnership, we get an intern that comes out and takes care of our technology, if you get a chance to like us on Facebook. She handles the Facebook page and our webpage. We also have a marketing program that is put together by the Mass Communication Departments and the Graduate Studies at USC. We're just excited about what's happening, I'm excited about the opportunity to tell you what's happening, and again, on behalf of the staff and the students at WR Rogers, we thank you for the opportunity to stand up here and tell you about just a few of the things that's happening, and the opportunity to help market our program. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. York. Any questions? Any questions? Any questions? Questions or comments from the Board?
I'd like for his staff to stand, if any of his staff members-
I'd like for his staff to stand, if any of his staff members are here.
They're not. I think one of the coaches said it best, that they're where they ought to be. We have classes tonight.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Cunningham, let me say that, for the benefit of the audience, the U.S. Department of Education and their wisdom, and I use that term loosely, will take those 100 students that you just talked about, getting their GED or a high school diploma, and they do count that against us, unfortunately, when they do our graduation count. And so regardless of the way they count them, you're getting those 100 people certified with credentials at the high school level makes a difference in their lives, whether we get credit for them towards graduation or not. So thank you for your job well done.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have on our agenda, public participation. We had one individual to sign up, and that's Ms. Shannon Thomas. She will come up at this time to the podium and address the board. Ms. Thomas, you'll have three minutes to share your comments, and if there's a response as necessary, will come after this meeting. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Shannon Thomas. I was told to state my name and address. 1967, Lake Carolina Drive, here in Columbia, 29229. I apologize for the raspy voice. And also, in advance, if I stutter, as I had to revise my speech here, as I was hitting to eliminate my daughter's name.
That's correct.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I stand before you, after being advised by several Richland School District Two faculty and staff members, as they felt that my story needed to be heard by the decision-makers and how their decisions affect parents such as myself. On April 1st, my daughter was involved in a physical altercation with another student at Westwood High School. The physical altercation was the result of my daughter being bullied by two students that were forced to physically, two students where she was forced to physically defend herself after she was told earlier that day that she would be jumped. Although my daughter was only fighting with one of the students, all three students were questioned and recommended for expulsion and charges by the Richland County Sheriff's Department. Because my daughter is a very respectful young lady, in the magnet program, participates in extracurricular activities, and had no prior infractions, and also had been provoked, the school resource officer later dropped all charges against her and agreed that my child was in fact doing what any human would do in such a situation. I, of course, had to accompany my daughter to an administrative hearing, where it would be decided if she would return to school or be expelled. During the hearing, my daughter gave her statement and was questioned regarding the incident. I was told that it was the school board's responsibility to ensure that every student is safe and can learn in a safe environment, and that my daughter compromised that safety. It was later decided that she would not be expelled, but would complete the remainder of the school year at Blythewood Academy. Although I was not happy with the decision, as again, she was a first-time offender who was provoked, I accepted and followed the directions of the school board. My daughter and I were required to attend a parent-student intake at the academy prior to attending. It was at that time, at this time, that I noticed that the two students that initiated and participated in the altercation would attend Blythewood Academy as well. I was taken aback and confused as to how and why the victim, my daughter, a first-time offender with no infractions, received the same punishment as the others and placed in the same environment. The problem was not resolved at all. In fact, it was simply relocated. During the question-and-answer session, I voiced my concern for her safety as she was once again in the presence of the two, of these two students. I was assured that the students would not be in the same areas, and that there was a zero tolerance for less-than-stellar behavior, and therefore, my daughter would be safe. The following week, I again was required to attend orientation during my daughter's first day on campus. I was the last parent to lead the parent session, as I had questions regarding her classes.
You're going to have to wrap it up. Your time, your three minutes are up.
Okay. As I spoke with my daughter, with the staff members, the second staff member, excuse me, suggested as, or mentioned that the students would be watching a video on bullying. It was a felony, and in the state of South Carolina, would not be tolerated. During the video, one of the actresses portrayed a student that was being bullied, where she became extremely ill and lost several pounds, and stressed because of, she was ridiculed because of her weight. The students that involved in the situation, an altercation with my daughter, said loudly, "That's what she needs to do. Maybe she will lose weight," and laughed loudly. My daughter, of course, heard the comment and was able to clearly identify that the comment, where the comment came, as she sat near the students. Also, the students at that point had not been introduced to each other, so none of them, I apologize that I'm getting a little teary-eyed.
You're going to have to wrap it up, though. I'm not going to be able to let you continue. You need to come to conclusion.
Mr. Chairman, ask her to get to the bottom line, please. Ask her to get to the bottom line.
The bottom line is this. My daughter was placed again in a situation where she was again bullied on the first day. She was not removed from the situation. Within having to go through all of this, I lost my job, having to attend hearings where the situation was not resolved. It still has not been resolved, and again, today, she's been bullied again. I was the sole provider for my daughter, my mother, who's been laid off after 38 years, and my father, who suffers from prostate cancer. So because of the decisions not to return her back to school, she's still being bullied, I now no longer have a job and cannot support the three households that I have. So I simply ask you today, going forward, that I know that you cannot reverse the situation. I ask that she be sent back to her returning, or her sending school, that it was not going to be reversed. She had to stay where she was. But again, I can, because of the situation, and I have to pick her up at 3 o'clock, I cannot gain gainful employment at this point.
We will ask that your information be shared with the district staff, and we will get a response to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on our agenda, the voting on the executive session items. The chair will entertain a motion at this time.
Mr. Chair, I would like to make a motion for student number one, that we deny the Student number two, refer to Blythewood Academy. Student number three, refer to Blythewood Academy. Student numbers four and five, deny the appeal and refer to Blythewood Academy. And student number six, deny the appeal.
Motion's been made by Dr. Elkins. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mrs. Brill. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote. Motion passes 7-0. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda, under new business, no action required, requested, report on the third quarter financial statement. Dr. Hamm?
Dr. Mahle will be making that report.
Evening, Chairman, board members, executive staff, and public. I've got in your packet tonight is the third quarter financials. The, I won't read them to you. Bottom line of the third quarter financials are there, we're right on target. The good news is that our expenditures are right in target. The last three years, roughly 75, 78% of our budget. More importantly, right now, we are right on target, actually a little ahead of our property tax collections at this county level. So right now, we're in excellent shape and anticipate completing the year, hopefully with another addition to the fund balance. Any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Mahle. Any questions or comments from the board? Thank you very much, Dr. Mahle.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the report on the Transient Student Task Force. Dr. Hamm?
I'd like to call on Shirley Vickery to begin the presentation, and Abby Cobb will be joining her.
Chairman Jackson, members of the board, Dr. Hamm, executive staff, we thank you so much for allowing us to talk for just a few minutes about what we've been working on for the past, actually, two years. We started the work of the Transient Student Task Force last year, and you had a preliminary, preliminary report in about February, I think, of 2013. And this year, Dr. Hamm asked Mrs. Cobb and I to follow up on those recommendations, and we have some things we want to share with you tonight. Make sure I can do this. Okay, first, we just want to say that we realize this is a problem that affects students who move between schools in our district, as well as from other places outside the district, and we've been focusing on both of those things as we worked through. We also know that, that students who move have a big impact on their academic achievement, and we've been focusing on that from the very beginning of our discussions. Students who move don't graduate as much, they don't go, they frequently repeat a grade, and they also have lower academic achievement. So our entire discussions on the task force have been aimed at improving academic achievement and making sure that we know that everybody's focusing on outcomes for students. We have invited some folks who participated in the task forces with us this year to come tonight, and I just want to see if any of them were able to make it, so that we can show you that we have had a lot of folks working on this with us this year. Any members of our task force here? Stand up, if you don't mind. We've had folks participating from every department, and it's been really wonderful, because we've had things that we found out, as Ms. Cobb talks about the recommendations we've made, you'll see that they affect every department.
Good evening. Okay, so, so this year, when we reconvene the task force, we really focused on, first of all, making sure that we had all the parties that we really wanted to be there. So we invited those who participated last year, but then added those who we really needed to be at the table. And what we did is we really focused on goals that were realistic for us to, to work towards this year and in the incoming years. And so you'll see that those are the goals that we identified this school year, and what we've really done is just focused on those first two goals. So what I'd like to do is just take a few minutes just to talk to you about the checklist. And I believe you do have a copy of the draft, and we like to say that it is a draft, it's still, it's still a working document. But what we have done is what we have created, the task force really recognized that when students enroll and then, and when they withdraw, we need to make sure that the right information is getting to the right people in a, in a very timely manner, that they're not enrolling with us, and then we find out, you know, a couple of weeks later, that they've had previous attendance problems, or that they were maybe even on an IEP, and maybe that's not the right example, but that, that's an example of making sure that we're getting the right information in a timely manner. And so that checklist really helps us do that. And so it focuses on the need for communication and consistency, making sure that we're following the same procedures district-wide. And what you'll also see on the checklist is a focus on us being welcoming and inviting and really recognizing that, that initial contact that we have with our families really sets the foundation that we're going to have, the type of relationship that we're going to have with them. So we are currently in the pilot phase with our checklist. We have six identified sites that are currently rolling out the checklist right now. Shirley and I, Dr. Vickery and I, we've met with them once, and it's going well. It's really going well. We've gotten some really good feedback, and I think we're going to continue to get some great feedback. And then next year, we'll be doing full implementation district-wide, and we will be doing training this summer to make sure that all the registrars are prepared to roll that out. We are also focusing on, we say the word customer service, we're not real sure if that's the right word that we're going to use, but, but when we say the word customer service, I think most people understand what we mean by that. And again, kind of like what we talked about with the checklist, is understanding that every interaction that we have with our families is instrumental. From the minute they walk into our doors, from the minute that they leave us, every interaction impacts our student outcomes. And we all know that we need our parents on our side. We all know that they have to be a partner with us in order to, for their children to be the most successful academically and socially and behaviorally in all those areas. And so what the task force has really identified is the need for us to really focus on those customer service skills. And where we're at right now is we basically decided that we need a Richland Two standard that all employees should be held to, as far as the, the customer service or, or first impressions. And so that's currently where we're at in that process, where the steering committee is working on looking at some different models, as you might say, of standards of customer service, to see if we can role model those and then make them unique to Richland Two. And so just to kind of wrap it up, our accomplishments, we're really excited about that checklist. We've, we've come a long way. The checklist, there was a lot of eyes, a lot of hands. All the principals were introduced to it at their meetings, and, and we got the go from them. Like we said, the registrars were all on board. We've gotten front office staff approval, kind of looking at it. So it's, it's really been a really great process of a lot of different people being involved, and they're on board with it. And so we're in the pilot process, full implementation next year. We're currently working towards creating standards for customer service, which will eventually lead to implementation and a training process. And then we will continue our task force and continue to work towards our goals. So we're really excited. I think Dr. Vickery and I are just beyond pleased. It's been a really successful year. There's been a lot of, lot of great people on our team, and we've gotten a lot accomplished in a short period of time.
Questions or comments from the board? Thank you very much. Question, I, I saw the number of students who are here, who were in the district, in the district last year, not here this year. What about the number of students that are in the district this year but weren't here last year? I didn't see that one, Dr. Vickery, in terms of, how many of those are we trying to catch up to speed who were first time missing two students, but they may be in third, fourth, fifth, sixth grade?
Right. And those data we have by school, we didn't give you all of those, but we have them that we can show you. Some schools experience much more movement than others. We have those for elementary and middle schools.
Curious to see that. And then the other question is, what about the support service? I was looking at your goals. Is one of your, is one of your goals embedded maybe in the goals that you've stated here, to make sure that the support services that students need outside of the classroom are in fact being monitored and they're receiving them to help them be successful in the classroom?
Yes, sir. The, the real focus of the checklist is to increase communication and then make sure the service happens. We realize when someone moves a lot, there's that time when people don't find out exactly what someone needs, so that they have the chance to put it in place. And the central part of the checklist, if you look at that, really looks at finding, figuring out or making a best guess what that need is and getting that information to the right person. We'll be looking at the academic interventions and things like that that people get in a further work of our, of our, of our task force. But right now, we're really trying to get them to the services they need.
Very much. Other questions or comments from the board?
Chair?
Dr. Fleming?
This is purely sort of off the wall, but I agree with what you're doing. I mean, we've got to make this for us and for them. I mean, this is, this works both ways. It gives us the data and information we need and also helps get the students in the right place. Now academically, that's our goal, isn't it? To make sure we can make it seamless as possible. When I, when I think about that, I draw back on the, on the years when we had 15,000 students, and our biggest concern was transition from elementary school to middle school. And we had plans, we had those types of plans for academics, and it's a transition. It's, and I'm just wondering if those academically, you know what I'm saying, that's important too. I mean, and we've been, we've been working on that for years and years and years, and I hope some of those ideas translate into helping these students also.
But we do have other task forces working on those specific transitions and some things being put into place to impact that. And so those things are rolling forward.
Also, it says established goals. Have you established all your goals, or you're in the process, or I'm just, I don't know exactly where you are, and, but it was on your list here.
Yeah. Well, we, we picked two of the goals that the group identified last year. We took their six goals that the group had decided on, and the top two were the things that the steering committee and our task force this year wanted to tackle first. We'll, after we get going on those, we'll reprioritize and see where we go next. We do have those others that we'll look at, that if we decide there's something different to tackle, we'll go that direction. We're really trying to get the right, it is a combination of social behavioral things, but it's really focused on what academic things do students need, and how do we have an impact on that academic performance of these kids.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments from the board? Ms. Bectry?
I really like the forms.
I really like the forms, and this is probably opening up a whole different area, but do we have the same type of forms in place for the in-house students that are, you know, in the district full-time?
Moving within the district?
I mean, is this going to be used for every student?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
It's about thirty percent who move within the district. Sometimes, communication there cannot be as good as we want it to be either because people don't know the student's about to move and things like that. So, we, we focus just as much on intra-district moves as inter-district moves.
Thank you very much. Other questions or comments from the Board? Thank you, ladies, very much.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair?
Dr. Elkins?
I have a few questions concerning our Chromebook and technology. Do we have anyone here who can address three questions that I have tonight?
Yes, I'm. Oh, he's right there. Yes, yes, ma'am, Dr. Elkins.
Oh, great. And I do apologize, I meant to ask these questions last meeting. The first one is, how are we measuring the effectiveness of our digital initiatives in the schools?
Digital initiatives?
Yes.
Well, we, we currently have several approaches to that. One is the, the work that takes place with the technology and learning coaches at the school, along with the support of Technology Integration Team at the district level that collaborates with academics to identify appropriate resources that support those technologies. And then, we have an evaluation taking place in partnership with the University of South Carolina. It's an out, an outcomes-based evaluation that's, you've heard periodic updates. Previously, it's called the Getting to Outcomes Evaluation, and we'll have a, a report about that in a future board meeting that will give some feedback on, on levels of engagement and integration that's taking place with digital resources that's going on. The academics team also has their curriculum folks that help to work with how, how we align software, online resources with, with students' needs. Our, our Technology Integration Team further recently created what's called a Digital Starter Kit, which gives teachers the ability to very quickly go to a, a webpage that we've created that gives them solid recommendations about software applications, online resources, online content that may be appropriate for whatever the lesson plan is, for whatever the, could be an implementation of Common Core standards. So, that's, that's part of that, too. We also have, as, as part of the implementation of Common Core and, and other curriculum standards, we have our Technology Integration Representatives that work collaboratively with, with the folks at that level to, to identify appropriate resources. So, there's lots of different angles of looking at that, and so, we, we believe we have good resources in place moving forward. We also have the Google Apps for Education. That's a key part of allowing teachers to, to help students. If there's more information you, you need, I'd be happy to find that information for you.
Thank you. And you answered the other two questions, so, thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Elkins. Thank you, Ms. Kramer. Next on our agenda is the agenda items for our May twenty-seventh board meeting, which will be back here at Polo Road. Dr. Hamm?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. First of all, we'll begin that meeting at four-thirty PM with an administrator appreciation dinner, and we'll have special recognitions, student focus, the authorization for the superintendent to apply for available state, federal foundation and other special funded programs for fiscal year fourteen, fifteen. And I was wondering whether you'd like to add to that an update on legislation, particularly as it relates to the Common Core, cursive writing and some of the other issues that the Board has previously discussed, that legislative session won't be finalized, but I thought that might be helpful.
That would be a great idea. One of the things we didn't do this year was sort of give a periodic update on what was happening in the General Assembly. So, I think having it at our next board meeting would be an excellent opportunity for us to be updated. Thank you very much. Are there other items the Board would like to add to the May twenty-seventh board meeting or any future board meeting? Hearing none. Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is the public participation, Part Two. No one signed up for this. However, if there's anyone in the audience who would like to come up and address the Board, you may do so at this time. Thank you. Next on our agenda is the Board and Superintendent's comments. I'll start with you, Ms. Anderson, if I may?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to commend the students who were turnaround students this evening. They were just wonderful-looking, some of them looked like they were afraid, and some of them were just joyful as they could be. And that little one was just perfect. I don't know, he was in the, what, fourth, third, um, third grader, third, three-year-old or four-year-old, but he was simply wonderful. But all the students, I commend them for turning themselves around, and I hope they will stay turned around and be successful with their future endeavors. And I appreciate all that you all do, Mr. Miley and your staff. I commend you on the budget process. We gave you the numbers and you came up with the budget, so I do appreciate all of that to you and your entire staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Dr. Fleming?
Just wanted to again congratulate those award winners tonight. We know we have many in this district at this time of year, especially around graduations. You see the number of scholarships that students receive, you see besides the awards they're receiving. We're just, we're blessed here in District Two to have a great faculty, staff and students. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Fleming. Mr. Manning?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to remote into this meeting from Florida where I am for, for work, and appreciate all the award winners and the great things that are going on in Richland Two and look forward to graduation.
Thank you, sir. Miss Specter?
I just would like to congratulate all the award winners, and also, it was really great to see the presentation on the W.R. Rogers Center. I remember when I first came on the Board, that was the first groundbreaking, I believe, I went to, standing in the hot sun. Remember that, Melinda? It was on a Sunday afternoon.
Yes, yes, yes.
It's just exciting when you really start seeing where it's ended now and where the beginnings are. Thank you.
Thank you, Miss Specter. Ms. Brill?
I wanted to congratulate Dr. Monica Elkins Johnson. Did I get it right? Doctorate in Education. Awesome. Proud of her and good job. And also, want to congratulate the turnaround awardees. Their stories are always inspiring, and it's a time that I certainly appreciate. And I thought the remarks by Patrick Kelly, Teacher of the Year, were excellent. He did a really nice job. I told him he got an A. Really good. And I was a history major, too, so I appreciate that he teaches government, he said. And I'm proud of our outstanding students and athletes. They all had a, really a great year. I enjoy reading about Richland Two on the sports page. I think they give us nice coverage, and I'm always proud. And also, the Spring Valley ROTC continues to do an excellent job with those students. And I know Perry Langston and Major Ward also received recognition, which they're deserving. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brill. Dr. Elkins?
Thank you. Before I get started, a few board meetings ago, I recognized a young lady who had won the Dalla Moore Scholarship, and she's here with us tonight. If you could just stand up for us and tell me your name, I've drawn a blank. Victoria Brown, thank you for coming, and let's congratulate Victoria Brown.
Can you tell us what that scholarship is again? Can you tell us what that scholarship is again?
I will let Victoria have the honor of doing that. Victoria, can you come to the mic and just tell us a little bit about that scholarship, please? I do apologize for putting you on the spot, since I saw you sitting out there tonight.
The Dalla Moore School of Business program for USC is a very, is a business program, sorry, I'm nervous.
That's okay.
And it, it's well-known for its MBA program, and that's one I, what I want to do when I graduate. So, I got accepted into their summer program, which is like an introductory phase to like the college life for it. And they accepted me, I got the paper sent in, and so, I'll be doing that this summer.
Fantastic. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, Victoria. And also, as you heard, I completed my doctorate degree, but I want to recognize a few folks because it would not have been possible without the help and assistance and support of the following people. Polo Road, Dr. Franklin, her parents and her great, third-grade students, North Springs, Dr. H, the parents and the third-grade students over there, Jeff Potts and his great team who work with me, as well as the District Research Committee. So, I want to say thank you to this, to you guys. It would not have been possible without your support and help, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Elkins. Dr. Hamm?
I too want to congratulate Dr. Elkins Johnson on earning her doctorate, and also want to say thank you for putting into action the belief that we should never stop learning. That's a great example for our students. I want to encourage people to participate in the first session of U and Two that will begin at six PM on Tuesday, May the twentieth, at Bridge Creek Elementary School. That's a community engagement event that will include a brief overview of the district and then a district panel question and answer session. We hope that members of the Richland Two community will come and share their ideas and visions for how we continue to make Richland Two an outstanding school district. Finally, I want to mention two great things that happened in the district today. First of all, before this meeting, we had our thirty-three students who received turnaround awards. That really is one of my very favorite events. These kids just really have accomplished remarkable things, sometimes despite terrible hardships, and you have to admire them for the remarkable achievements that they've made and the changes that they've made. They're real champions, so congratulations to them. And then, if you drive down Decker Boulevard, you'll find on the back of the Staples Building that our students are creating a wonderful mural there, and that is going to be a great enhancement and introduction to the international corridor that Decker Boulevard is becoming, and a great way to celebrate the, the diversity of our community and what a wonderful representation of the international flavor that that community has. Congratulations to our students, and thank you to the Richland, to Richland County and to the Cultural Council for making that possible and for involving students from Forest Lake, from Dena, from Richland Northeast in the project. We're really proud of the work they're doing on the mural, and it is going to be a wonderful enhancement to the community. It's great to have that kind of art as part of our community.
Thank you, Dr. Hamm.
Mr. Chair, could I interrupt before your last comments?
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Anderson.
I too want to commend Dr. Johnson, Elkins Johnson, on her PhD. I wanted to be the one to announce it tonight. I was so happy for her on Friday as she graduated and was hooded, so congratulations. And I want to say to, boy, I'm looking dead at you. It was Dr. Cunningham. You have brought that program a long ways. I worked, I taught nursing assistant in that program many, many years ago, just prior to Mr. Rogers, Dr. Rogers being taken ill. I was twisted by the finger from his bed that I had to go teach that program. And to see all of the things that you're doing in that program is simply awesome. So, you have taken it a long ways since your inception, so I just want to commend you publicly and thank you and continue to do a great job.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. This has, in fact, indeed been another great school year for Richland School District Two in spite of and overcoming many obstacles and the odds of, of us not performing at a high level. Students have yet again demonstrated that the teaching and learning that's going on in the classroom, it really does translate into high academic achievement by the district, by all twenty-seven thousand students who are part of this outstanding district. And including the work that's going on at the Adel Ed Center, I want to echo that as well, because for a number of students, those hundred students or more, it has made the difference in their life, and, and it allows them now an opportunity to become gainfully employed or to continue to pursue goals of higher education that otherwise they would not have had the opportunity to do so. So, I certainly want to echo the comments that fellow Board Members have made. And finally, I certainly want to thank you, Dr. Vickery and Amy, for the work that you're doing, Abby, the work that you're doing with regards to transient students. I don't know, I was just sitting and doodling on my pad as you were talking about the numbers and you throw out, you know, ten percent or twenty percent. Maybe, maybe folk don't realize that you're talking about several thousand students in our district who are impacted by that. And those principals who are in the audience, you certainly know, a couple of, less than a hundred students can impact our student, our performance data in terms of test score ratings. So, multiply that times several thousand students who are in our district coming in for the first time or moving around and not performing well, how it can drastically impact the performance, the overall performance of our district, school report card, et cetera. So, thank you very much for doing a very critical job for a very critical mass of students who need our help the most. If there are no other comments from the Board, the Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
No move.
Thank you very much. Have a good night, folks. Meeting adjourned.